I'd like to call this Temecula Planning Commission Regular Meeting of November 20th to order. We will begin with a flag salute. If you would all please stand and join Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you. Yes, if you ever two please stand, remove your hat, place your right hand over your heart, and join me this evening in the pledge. Ready, begin.
[inaudible]
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
And Chair Hagel.
Here.
All are present.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments.
Okay, I will skip reading that. And welcome everyone here to this meeting. The next is the consent calendar. And I will read this on the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of the commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planning commissioner, planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. So, do we have a motion on the minutes?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So that item is moved five to zero. We have now on the calendar a public hearing. Do we have public comments for the public hearing?
We have received a few.
Okay, so I've got to read this?
Yep.
Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and may be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments in all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called at for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. Appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution 2021-54. So, before we begin, I just wanted to state that our role is to review the applicant's plan against the specific plan and overlay and the requirements. I'd like to make sure that all commissioners have the opportunity to discuss every item and items and ideas raised. So I'll ask that any motions that are requested, I will call them and for a vote in the order that I receive them. And we will go on to item number two, which is continued from May 15, 2024, meeting, planning application number PA 22-0035. A development plan for the construction of approximately 285,125 square feet, 350 rooms, seven-story full service hotel that includes an approximately 174,382 square foot parking garage, conference facilities, ballroom, full-service spa, restaurants, bars, lounges, retail outlets, workout facility, outdoor pool area, and an outdoor wedding garden. And PA 22-0037, a tentative parcel map, TPM 38349, to combine 10 existing lots into a single lot. The project is located on the east side of Old Town Front Street between First Street and Second Street, APNs 922-072-005, 007, 010, 011, 013, 016, 018, 020, 021, and 023. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Planning Commissioners, this is PA 220035 and 0037, the Temecula Resort and Spa. As you previously stated, it is a development plan for the construction of an approximately 285,125 square foot, 350-room, seven-story, full-service hotel that includes an approximately 174,382 square foot parking garage. Hotels of this size are permitted use so long as the project meets all the design criteria and development standards of the zoning district. It's also a tentative parcel map, TPM 38349, to combine the 10 existing lots into a single As you also stated, here's the project location on the screen. Shows Second Street, First Street, and Old Town Front Streets, located on the east side of Old Town Front Street between First Street and Second Street adjacent to I-15. A little bit of history on the project, even though we were all here for these. The project was considered by the Planning Commission on September 6 of 2023. At the conclusion of that hearing, the Planning Commission voted to accept the staff recommendation of redesign of the project in order to comply with the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. The project was also considered by the Planning Commission on May 15 of this year. At the conclusion of that hearing, the Planning Commission voted for redesign of the project in order to further comply with the development standards of the Old Town specific plan, as well as three specific design requests. One, relocate the pool area from the freeway side of the building to a location that provides engagement with Old Town. Two, provide additional horizontal and vertical articulation. And three, provide functioning balconies. Since that meeting, staff has worked with the applicant on the project design in order to meet all the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. So since the last Planning Commission hearing, the project was presented to the Planning Commission Old Town Temecula Subcommittee on September 12 of this year. That was without the applicant present. September 18 of this year, that was with the applicant. And then October 10, also with the applicant. So a little bit of quick analysis. The project is located with the downtown core hotel overlay district of the Old Town specific plan. Again, it's seven stories, 93 feet, eight inches high, 350 rooms, 380 parking spaces, which is within the parking garage. 379 spaces are required for 300, I should say 50, sorry, hotel rooms, and approximately 8,507 square feet of meeting space. So where is the hotel overlay zoning district? So this is the map of Old Town. This is the hotel overlay. So this is the section of Old Town where you are allowed or permitted to do an eight-story and up to 100-foot-high hotel. So just for a little bit of reference, you have Dan's Feed and Seed is in that overlay area. You have the Stampede, and you have the existing roadway inn. So all those parcels in that area would be allowed to do a project of this magnitude. So how did we get to the allowance for full-service hotels? May 25 of 2010, the City Council adopted ordinance 10-09, which allows for full-service hotels at a building height greater than other buildings in Old Town. Again, you could go up to eight stories and 100 feet in height. The height allowance was an incentive to bring additional economic activity into Old Town, such as conferences, large meetings, events, weddings, all things of that nature. But in order to receive the height incentive and designation of a full-service hotel, projects are required to meet the design criteria and development standards of the zoning district in addition to the supplemental requirements for full-service hotels. So those requirements are: Hotel lobby shall be located along street plazas. Streets, plazas, courtyards, or sidewalks create visual entrance for pedestrians. Hotel rooms shall be accessed from an interior hallway. Hotel shall provide an onsite restaurants with table service provided primarily by a waitperson, seating for at least 30 customers, and a full menu service offering multiple entrees with onsite food preparation. Hotels shall provide conference facility space to accommodate a minimum of 1,000 people. Development shall be designed to create an outdoor pedestrian space featuring amenities such as benches, outdoor dining, public gardens, courtyards, forecourt, or a plaza. Building facade shall be articulated with wall offsets, recesses, openings, ornamentation, and colors, and materials to add texture with special detail to the streetscape. Pool and spa facilities are permitted on patios, balconies, or terraces located on the second floor or above when integrated into the building architecture and design. The project, as proposed, meets all the design criteria and development standards of the hotel overlay zoning district. So pedestrian access into the hotels. You have Old Town Front Street is on the bottom of the screen. First Street is on the right, and Second Street's on the left. So the main pedestrian entrance into the hotel is off of Old Town Front Street, and that's what the entrance would look like. Addition, you have a pedestrian entrance on First Street and a pedestrian entrance along Second Street. Now, if you were traveling by car, you would have an entrance off of First Street, an entrance off of Second Street that goes into the parking garage, and then you would either go to the valve area, or you'd park your car and walk into the hotel. We also have an area here that shows the automobile areas in the red, and the pedestrian area is in the green, so you can see the separation between those two areas in order to minimize any pedestrian versus automobile conflicts. So go through the floors of the hotel. You have the ground floor, which has the exterior entrance from Old Town Front Street, the interior entrance from the parking garage, registration area, a grand ballroom, a banquet lounge with outdoor seating, and that's what that would look like. Then you have the restaurant with outdoor dining there along First Street. And then you have your back-of-the-house area, which would be kitchen, security, pantry, things like that nature. Moving on to Second Street, or the second floor on Front Street, or the ground floor on Second Street, you have a junior ballroom, meeting rooms, day spa facilities, the restaurants with outdoor dining. Now, this is a change from the previous time you saw this, is the restaurant has been moved to the corner of the building. Originally, it was pushed back. You'll see it flip-flopped where the yoga was. So this will provide even more engagement with Old Town if you're out there on the terrace That would be the second-floor dining. And then the yoga and gym facility moved further back to the back of the building where there doesn't need to be engagement with Old Town. And then the retail outlets are located over here on Second Street, and then the mechanical rooms and utility equipment located on the back of the building in the alley. Moving on to the third floor, this is the new location of the pool area, which overlooks Old Town Front Street and First Street. This is the wedding garden, which have had sound panels have been added to the rear in order to cut down on the noise for any weddings that are taking place back there. One thing that was pointed out by one of the commissioners on the packets is, I believe it was on the rendering from the freeway showing this rear of the hotel, there was a call-out for pool cabanas. Obviously, there's no pool there, so it was just a wrong label from the applicant, so we'll get that cleaned up. And then you have the dog park or dog run, whatever you want to call it. In addition, you do have the guest rooms, including five rooms with decks that are overlooking Second Street, and that's the rendering of what that would look. Moving on to the architecture of the building, the proposed architecture is the neoclassical revival. It is an allowed architectural style per the Old Town specific plan. Style elements within the design of the project are as follows. So this shows the corner of the building, obviously, as you would be coming into Old Town. So we have some vertical columns, vertical coins, the gallery frontage. Moving on to Old Town Front Street, the horizontal band helps break up between the first and the second floor of the building, the decorative cornice along the top. And then moving on to First Street, so you have the roofline pediments with the motives. And then zooming in on that, and then even further, you can see the ornamentation, the architectural element. And then finally, you have that gallery frontage that we looked at earlier that has the dining on both the ground floor and the second floor. In terms of landscaping, the Old Town specific plan, street trees are proposed along the streetscape on First Street, Second Street, and Old Town Front Street. Those are the only requirements of the specific plan for landscaping. As previously stated, there is a tentative parcel map a part of this project to consolidate 10 existing contiguous parcels into a single parcel. So this is the existing parcel configuration, and then this is the proposed parcel. So getting into those design concerns from the previous meeting. So at the Planning Commission meeting on March 15 of this year, the Planning Commission identified three design concerns and recommended that the applicant, even though we previously stated these, relocate the pool area from the freeway side of the building to a location that provides engagement with Old Town, provide additional horizontal and vertical articulation, and provide functioning balconies. The proposed project has addressed these design concerns in the following manner. Terms of the pool location, the pool, which was previously located adjacent to Interstate 15, has been relocated to the corner of Old Town Front Street and First Street. This will allow for engagement with Old Town, a reduction of building massing on First Street and Old Town Front Street, and providing a much more inviting corner of the building. So this is what that now looks like. You can see the massing that was originally all along First Street has been pushed back off the corner, opens up the corner. If you're coming into Old Town, it's much more inviting look, a softening of the building. Terms of the horizontal and vertical articulation, additional articulation has been added to the building in the following manner. Seventh-floor decks have been added to the Old Town Front Street, First Street, and Second Street sides of the building to push the seventh floor of the building back in certain locations. The new location of the pool allows for a massing of the building along First Street to push back approximately 45 feet. And the Old Town Front Street elevation provides for a three-and-a-half-foot recess in the center of the building and a six-foot recess at the location of the corner balconies. And the addition of the balconies that are now usable or functionable provides for further building articulation to break up the flat wall planes. So same view that we looked at earlier. This shows the 45-foot setback that's now been added. Location of the roof decks, which push back the seventh floor of the building. And that's the location of the three-and-a-half-foot recess on Front Street. So originally, on Front Street, it was essentially a flat plane that was going across there. So now they've pushed back the center portion of it. Close-up view of the roof decks. And then again, that recess. So here is the previous and the proposed. So again, the massing of the building is off the corner. Seventh floor has been pushed back in locations, and the functioning balconies help to break up that horizontal plane. So previously, off of Front Street, and then proposed off of Front Street. You can see the building's flipped. The recess of the building and the deck. Pediment's been added to the roofline, and all of the functioning balconies. So this would be along Second Street. Proposed versus the previous. So again, seventh-floor roof decks and all of the functioning balconies that you can So functioning usable balconies. Functioning balconies are proposed on 65% of the guest rooms now. The depth of those balconies have increased from two-and-a-half feet to four feet, providing additional area. You know, guests can now get a chair or chairs out there to actually use the balconies. And the rooms that do not provide usable balconies have smaller balconies and railings with the ability to open sliding doors. So just because you don't have a functioning balcony room, you still have the ability to open the door and get the air in. So what does the difference in the balcony size look like? So this is the previous, has the two-and-a-half-foot balcony. And then this is the exact same set of rooms that now shows the four-foot balcony, so you can see what the difference is. So again, previously, there were zero usable balconies with a two-and-a-half-foot maximum balcony length. Proposed on this section is five usable balconies with four-foot balcony, and five small with sliding doors. And then up close, what do those balconies actually look like that are functioning in that location? And then you see those locations. You can see the difference of size between a balcony that's going to be usable and not There was one condition of approval that's been added to the project since the staff report went out, and that will read for gradient permit issuance. The gradient permit shall be issued at the discretion of the city engineer and building official. In addition to this, we did receive one letter of opposition. It was emailed to all the planning commissioners, and it's on in front of you for review. It's also out in the lobby as well. Terms of environmental determination, it is exempt from CEQA Section 15332 of Class 32 for infill development projects. And with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA 220035 and PA 220037, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes staff report. I'm here for all the questions, and the applicant and the architect is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Scott. That was well done. I think it's great to see the older plan and the proposed plan side by side. We'll start questioning only of Scott and staff. Start with Fernando, if you have any questions.
Yeah. On Second Street, I noticed that there's balconies, so the ones that have the railing, but that don't have a landing for the balcony, so the windows open up?
Sliding doors, correct.
Sliding doors. And then the railing is like for safety?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's it.
Are you good? Okay. Go ahead.
Well done, Scott. I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions, but just on there, just a reminder to the audience that that meeting was May 15. I think it said on the slide, March 15.
You'd be correct, May 15.
Okay. Adam?
Only question, I don't know if this would be for Scott or Muddy Sal. I just didn't know if somebody could speak either now or later to the letter.
Probably no reason we can't do it now?
Sure. So we received a letter from a law firm representing, say, for the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, objecting to the city relying on a Class 32 categorical exemption, which is infill development. The letter doesn't provide any actual analysis. It just says the exemption doesn't apply. The staff report and resolution clearly articulates why staff made the determination that it did fall within that exemption, including general plan consistency, the fact that the project is within a hotel overlay that has already determined that hotels are appropriate up to this height on that site, and that the project went to the JPR process, and it was determined that there wasn't any criteria, there wasn't any, you know, habitat here that we needed to be concerned with, and therefore, that's staff's position.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted some clarification and make sure the letter was addressed. No other questions for Scott. Thank you for the presentation.
I don't have any questions, so we will go on to public speakers. I will open up the public. I'm sorry. Okay. I do need to...
We can open up the public hearing, have the applicant come.
So we're opening up the public hearing, and we will have the applicant. If you would please step up to the podium and share whatever you'd like to share at this point.
Hi, my name is Andrew Kill at One Stop Design. I'm the project architect. We are in agreement with the staff report, and we don't have any further presentation. But we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Thank you for your time for reviewing this project with us, and we hope you give us your unanimous approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, you can sit, and then you'll probably have to stand again.
We'll be here.
Okay. So we will hear from our speakers?
Yes, we've received three requests to speak. We have Lawrence Lussar, and then following him, we'll have James Hill. But we'll start with Lawrence. You have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Hagel and members of the commission and city staff. I'm here today because I have concerns about this project, and I'd like to start off by saying that I don't think that this big of a complex should be in Old Town. You're taking a historic district, and you're turning it into an enterprise district. I don't know what the rationale is for that. Why not have that be in Jefferson further north or somewhere else in the city? Why put it in Old Town is my question. Second of all, the original planners planned for small quaint buildings there, first one- and two-story buildings, and there was 10 parcels. And now combining all those parcels to make this mega-complex. So I'm concerned about the parking is grossly underparked. And let me show you what, why I say that. This is the, from the plans and what also Scott presented. The parking requirement is for 380 parking spaces. They have, excuse me, 379, they have 380. But let me show you a problem. This is also from the plans. If you look at the number of people which the project accommodates for conference facilities, 1,200 people. You add that. You add the 350 cars for the hotel rooms, plus 75% occupancy of the conference floor, and then you add another 75 people for hotel staff, you need 1,300 parking spaces, not 380. So that's my concern about parking. And Old Town is already underparked. The place where this is going in is replacing a parking lot that was needed. The second, another item is it's, there's so much valet parking. Once the employees park... Once the employees park their cars where they need, the majority of the parking left is valet parking, which in other words is paid parking. And so people are not going to want to pay, where are they going to park? Right next door here. Your lot is going to be filled first and it's going to be filled constantly because there's not enough parking because of the size of this project. And lastly, I feel that a parking, excuse me, a traffic study is needed. The amount of cars concentrated in this one area needs to be analyzed to see if it's going to be a problem. I think it will be. And so I think that I would be in favor of this project if it had the proper number of parking spaces. I would also endorse it if it had a building height of four stories, not eight or seven. And I feel that a traffic study needs to be done to actually find out what's going to happen. And lastly, I urge the planning commission and the city council to change that ordinance that they did to give an incentive to build these kind of megaplexes in the wrong place. They need to change it so that it's somewhere else in the city, maybe Alter or somewhere on Jefferson further north. This is not the place. Because of that ordinance, every single historic building is going to be replaced by an eight story building. It's not, it's not appropriate. Thank you for letting me speak, do you have any questions?
Now, thank you.
Our next speaker is James Hill. Following James Hill will be Andrew Mellon.
Welcome.
Good evening everyone, how you doing? I'm in favor of this building, I've lived in town for thirty years, I've watched it grow, I've seen all the talks about traffic study. You had an old gentleman that was part of, that fought it for years about all the traffic and the building and so forth. So far, it gets congested at times, you can see the freeway how it runs. I like to, the city to grow in the right value, it's growing, you got the wine countries that are becoming a destination. We got Pachanga that's over there doing its thing. And I think Old Town needs its own destination to come to and building it right and doing it right. I know he's concerned about the parking, the gentleman before me. I understand the Stampede's going to be coming in with parking garage probably back there eventually. This may kick off some of these other projects that I've been bidding on, I have contractors, well, I'm tired of going to LA. I'd love to come do all the work here in this town if I could. Some of these other projects that failed in the last two or three years, hopefully they'll come back on, they'll have some of their own parking as well. And that's what I'm hoping for, I hope you pass this and make it part of this community and make it a destination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Mellon.
Welcome.
Good evening everybody. My name is Andrew Mellon and I'm a representative with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters here in Riverside. Our stance on this project is that we believe that we will be impacted by its environmental impact problems. And we believe that the city should require that the project be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage and utilize apprentices from state certified apprenticeship programs. Workforce requirements reduce construction related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent twenty twenty report titled Putting California On The High Roads, A Job And Climate Action Plan For Twenty Thirty, the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hiring requirements can result in air pollutant reductions, I'm sorry. Furthermore, recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act of twenty twenty-two, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Twenty Eleven, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain sitting affordability and development standards. Thank you.
That concludes all our speakers.
Okay. Okay. We will. Yeah, now I'm waiting. Matt, do you want to, yeah, I know. Matt, did you have any, anything you want to share at this point?
Just wanted to point out, we did receive one more comment letter at six oh nine. And I was just showing our city attorney, so I just saw it. Oh, it's a replacement letter. So I would guess that it's substantially similar to what was submitted earlier. But if you could continue on, I'll take a look at it and clarify.
Okay, does, will it need to be read into in record?
We'll take a look at it to see, but it's not a timely letter, so comments need to be submitted before the hearing if they're going to be disseminated to the public, otherwise someone needs to come here and personally make the comments.
Okay, all right. If the applicant would come back up again, we may have questions of you. So I'm going to start with the subcommittee since you've heard this over and over again and have probably a lot more knowledge than anybody else does.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions of the applicant. So I think I'll just save my comments for when we, when we discuss.
Gary?
I would just ask the applicant to respond to the public comments. If you could briefly explain why did you pick Old Town, why are you putting an eight story hotel in Old Town? I think that's what the question was, it, his opinion, it doesn't fit, so I would like to hear your reasoning why. And then the second one was parking. Do you have a response to his concern that there isn't enough parking in the project? And I think that's it.
Let me answer the parking requirements and let Ross handle the other one. Parking, that we have some space that we reserve for the storage spaces, so we can add a few more. But we will have a parking attendant to handle their guest parking when the event and guest comes to the hotel. And that's what the parking program that we have has of now.
So as submitted, your project meets the parking requirements for the plan?
Correct.
Okay. And Ross, did you want to?
Yeah, unfortunately, the, as we all know in Old Town Temecula, the parking is at a premium at any given time of day. So what's definitely going to be beneficial in the long run would be the development of the two parking structures that have always been in comments and consideration with the city council. The one on Sixth Street and one behind Stampede. Once those are appropriated and installed, the parking issues should be mitigated to a certain point. But then again, with the new parking plan that's being envisioned by the city council, we're talking about paid parking coming up pretty soon, even on the ancillary road sides, Second, Third, Fourth Street, Fifth Street. All of those areas are going to be dominated by paid parking. So until we mitigate the overall city of Temecula parking in Old Town, it is going to be a concern. And the pack, the fact is, is that when we have peak sees or peak meetings, the hotel may not be as full as during the day. So some of those individual meetings could be subsequently filling up our parking lot.
So like Andrew said, you've met the parking requirements.
Yes, we did meet the parking.
And then I just wanted you to briefly touch on the concerns of the gentleman that said, why? Why this hotel in Old Town, why an eight story hotel? What's, what's the developer's perspective on that question?
The history in regards to that hotel and the location goes back twenty twenty-two when Mr. Kim was looking for some property to build a hotel. He landed in Temecula and he reached out to the city development departments over there. And Christine Damco said that, you know, we do have a location for a large seven story, hundred foot high hotel area. And that piqued his interest and therefore that's why the ball started rolling. He is very intent on putting a resort in this area and he, shall we say, not intent, but his desire to put a seven story hotel, which would lend itself to the economic development, additionally economic development of Old Town. So. And that's part of the reason why he jumped on that property because when he talked to Christine Damco and he talked to the city council members, they were all very excited about him coming to Temecula to create a five star resort within the city limits.
So like a good businessman, he decided to take advantage of an opportunity that presented itself. And that opportunity came about as a result of the city council creating an overlay district on that particular parcel to allow, to allow at the council's request, a hotel of that size.
Yes.
So you're responding to the opportunity that was provided through the city's planning efforts.
Right.
And we're responding to, to that request from you as required by, by the city's charter and law and that type of thing. So I think you've addressed the concerns, we wanted to hear that. I heard the gentleman that asked that question wanted to know and I, and I would take this one opportunity once again to illustrate that that overlay allowed this.
It did indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just for clarifying, Ross kept mentioning Ms. Damco, she is the Economic Development Director. So just so everyone knows who that was.
Sorry, I didn't know her.
I'd like to jump in real quick to, just to comment with regard, first of all, to the comments about paid parking. That's a possibility in the future, that would be something that our city council would have to make a decision on. They've made no such decision at this point. Last week, an agreement did go forward and it was approved by city council with Frog Parking. That agreement will place sensors into the street. There's a pilot program that'll do a portion of the street along Old Town Front Street. With the idea being that eventually all of the city parking spaces in Old Town will be monitored so that then we can keep accurate counts of the, the use and the demand of various areas throughout Old Town. To see if there's areas that are underutilized, overutilized. There's a threshold that we have, which is eighty-five percent, when an area gets to be utilized at eighty-five percent of the parking spaces, that's considered to be impacted and at that point you start looking at different options to try to utilize your underutilized spaces, which would be maybe timed parking, possibly paid parking. But those are decisions that will come in the future and have not been made at this time. So there is stuff in the works, but that's, that's in the future. With regard to parking, I think that's been handled, but the Old Town specific plan has requirements for parking. They've met those requirements and we do not have the ability to just randomly decide that they need more. And then with regard to the history of why you can do an eight story hotel at this location. In two thousand and ten, we adopted an update to the Old Town specific plan. At that time, we'd actually started that process, I think in two thousand and eight, so we had a couple of years of over forty meetings with the community and with the business owners, property owners here in Old Town. And they helped to guide and direct what the future of Old Town was going to be. And part of that included this hotel overlay district. So I heard mention of a concern that every building in Old Town was going to become an eight story building. Old Town specific plan does not allow for that, there is a very specific small area that allows for the eight story hotel overlay. That would require a specific plan amendment and an update to the EIR to allow eight stories everywhere else. And I don't think that's practical or going to happen. So just wanted to point those couple of things out.
Okay, the other thing about the parking meter system is that that information will be communicated through signage and through an app that will help us to, to spread out and better use our parking spaces. We've got a lot more parking than I think most people think. A lot of those lots, a few years ago, I didn't even know where they existed, so I wasn't parking there and I think that goes for a lot of people. So we've looked at ways to better communicate that. And I think this, this next solution will help that tremendously and spread out the parking throughout all of our parking spaces.
Yeah, by no means was I trying to throw the scarecrow system into it. That based on the study that the parking study that the council has provided, it, it states that ultimately at some point in time, it doesn't say tomorrow, that there will be requirements requiring for
Yeah.
additional parking areas.
Yeah, and, and like Stuart said, the, one of the great things about this, the new technology they're going to use is it'll allow us to see when parking is being used, not only the day that it's being used, but the time that it's, it's being used and help with making that decision as to where to add parking, how to add it, so on and so forth.
Well, to enhance the parking area in this area. Thirty-five percent of the parking within the hotel property itself is allocated for EV charging stations.
Well, actually, that is a combination of EV charging and future EV charging stations.
Okay.
Right. So, I mean, when you come into the city of Temecula right now, you have, I believe, two or three locations for charging stations that we have available. This will allow more opportunities for EV cars to be charged while they're walking around Old Town.
Okay, I don't have, anybody else have any other questions?
I would like to address the third comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Which was the carpenters union. We, being such a large project, is not only going to be relegated to non-union teams, because that's not, it's impossible. Large companies such as electrical engineering companies, electrical HVAC, they're all pretty much a union shop. At this point in time, the union shop prices and the non-union shop prices are relatively close in price. So if we have the opportunity to use a union shop, we will use a union shop. We're not adverse to, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. If somebody presents a good quality price, and that's everything it's all based on. If a union shop meets the pricing requirements that we're looking for, by all means. It's competitive bidding and we have no problems with using unions shops at all. And in fact, I'm on a project right now for Pachanga and we're using fifty, fifty-five percent of the trades are all union. The others are just relatively minor. But the big boys that were union are all union.
Good, thank you for addressing that.
Okay.
Fernando?
Yeah, I have, I have a, just two questions. I know the front street elevation changed and I know now it's like recessed in where there's more kind of a sidewalk area. What happens to that paving there, does it, is it like going to be decorative paving on the entrance? Or is it going to be the same as our street or like the downtown street?
The first floor is not recessed, it's only above, it's the third floor and up.
Correct.
Can you pull up the elevation of the front street entrance? So I see that there's decorate, like there's a type of decoration on, on the floor.
The stamped concrete that you see or that you appear to see will match the city standards for stamped concrete. And the same color, the buff color, like any other building. for stamped concrete and the same color, the buff color, like any other building that's been built here, like fourth and front. That sidewalk that was put in place followed the guidelines of a stamped sidewalk.
Okay.
So anywhere there's pedestrian walkway sidewalks, that will all be stamped pedestrian concrete per city of Temecula standards.
Okay. And then on the ground floor, the ground floor plan where the, where it shows kind of the parking and that ten-foot kind of walkway that goes from front street all the way towards the lobby and then it goes from the lobby all the way to second street? I think it's a page A two-point-two. You can pull that up. There you go, that one. So what, what happens there? Is there like a, like a wall? Because I know, I know you still have five feet of property line and then you have this ten-foot walkway. What happens there?
Well, that's the same, the city standard, the walkway that we are going to propose, which the area that from the, our property line to the building line, which is ten-foot, that width will be the matching city standard sidewalk.
Okay. And then what happens in the parking lot? So can, can we go from the, like if someone was to walk there, would you be able to walk? Is, is there a wall kind of towards where the ADA parking spaces are at?
Not.
It's kind of like hatched? What is that?
Not really that. We will just have a different colors of concrete put it on there because of the, you know, ADA parking space. And you either have to have a same level or you gotta have a ramp going up. So we try to.
Yeah, so that, that area right there, because I know to the right where that area that you just highlighted is like five feet. And then that, and then from there, so if someone parked there, they can walk through, they don't have to go inside the building, they can walk through that, is it kind of like an alley or a walkway?
Right through here.
Sure. So.
There you go. They can, they can go, well, no. The way I see it on this plan, there's like a walkway, there's a separation of, I think, five feet. And then there's a, there's a connection of the lobby from right there, from that parking area. I'm assuming that's all one whole level. And then you see the lobby height unless, there's two doors that open up into the area?
Oh, so from their parking lot to their
To the lobby.
Right?
So could you, could you walk there?
It is all same level.
It's all same level?
It has to be all same level because of ADA requirements.
And there's, you don't have an elevation in that area, that Paseo area?
We do have all that elevation pointed out on the floor plan, I believe. When you zoom in, that little area that you have a finished floor elevation there. And that finished floor elevation, I believe it is one thousand eight point sixty-five, something like that. And that will be same as the elevation point of the parking.
I just feel that's an important area because you could go from front street and you can walk down that large alley and the alley is like probably like two hundred feet, right? And then you can.
Well, that's the reason why that when you look at closely, that we have actually three different levels on that L-one level, the ground floor level, that front street side to the parking area, we have approximately six feet difference in height. So we have a, a three different level, which that the elevator and registration portion is highest, let's say one thousand eight. And we do have the, the grand volume and back of a house portion, that's the middle level, which is one thousand eight, one thousand six. And it goes down to our, their banquet, the lounge toward to the front street is one thousand six. So we, one thousand four. So we have one thousand four, six and eight and three different level. That's the reason why you, you see that ramp going down from one, one space to the other.
Scott, can you zoom in a little bit on that picture?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that the setup drawing that you have shows that the ramps and different areas of it.
I think just my concern is it's just like a very, it's a connection from front street to the entrance of that lobby. And then from that lobby, then you can go down this, you could say alleyway to second street. And I don't think I see like, I don't know if there's an elevation right there.
So if you come in off, you're starting to come off front street, you have the ramp, levels out, got a ramp, levels out, and you can come out this way. It'll show up here in a second.
I don't think we see any of that. No, I'm talking about the exterior portion of the building on the south side of that, on the exterior wall.
When you.
Where the bullets are on the
Commissioner, when you look at our setup plan, floor plans, that wherever that we have an entrance.
Right here.
That we put, put that.
Yeah, that area, right there.
You can't go there.
Finish.
It's not their property. That's where roadway end is.
Oh, that.
So that's a wall right there?
That's a wall what you see.
So that's a wall?
Correct. That's, that's the wall, the bills that go straight up. And so to the right of that is, is in roadway end parking lot.
Ah, okay. And then when you get out of the lobby, what is that? There's a, is there a walkway that goes all the way to front street?
Yeah, right down the middle of the building.
When you go, when you get out of the lobby?
You would go through the lobby out onto front street through the main entrance on front street.
But from the exterior of the building, can you, can you walk? Because I have a ten-foot setback from the property line.
Right. That's basically, we are using that for the exit court.
Okay. So you could walk through there?
Sure. It is basically outside, ten foot all the way open to sky.
Okay. I'm looking at page A two-point-two. I just think that's an important corridor that you're going off of the main street and then you're going into the lobby and I just feel like it's a big.
That's going to be gated off. Now we're going to put a print.
Yeah. You just have to have a
Yeah.
The walkway there.
If you're looking at that page, that area right there, the no man's land between roadway and hotel.
Yeah, that's my concern, no man's land.
That is a buffer zone that we designed intently. So we could actually have a gate across there. So there will be no access, pedestrian access down that area.
Oh, there is not going to be.
Not necessarily.
It is going to be the fire exit only. And from that point of the door to the front street, we're just making a two percent of the slope and going down to meet the difference of the height.
Yeah, okay, I didn't see that note there. Okay.
I see what you're talking about and I got the plans up on the screen. So that door you're seeing is like they were saying, the fire exit.
The fire exit.
You wouldn't have.
But off of the, I'm worried, my concern is off of front street, what happens at front street? Like, for example, say someone's walking down front street, can they walk down there?
Then they walk down the alley.
And then connect down and then walk down toward the alley to second street?
So that area technically is available to walk in? Wouldn't be the best idea to walk there, but technically you could.
There would be a gate.
We'll have a gate.
You have a gate? Because if there's a walkway, I mean, I think it'll be a great walkway, it just maybe needs to be looked at a little closer. That's my, that's my concern.
Yeah, that's just for the fire exit.
Okay. And then you have two pools on the sec, on the third story?
Well, that's
I just see two circles.
It's just kind of a kid's area that
Oh, okay.
You know, kind of water is coming out of the ground.
Oh, okay.
It's a splash pad.
A splash pad.
Right, right. It, it is not the level difference there.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Good.
And then my only other comment is, you know, there's, there's people in the audience that came, maybe if, you know, this is probably the last chance that if someone wants to say something, I encourage them to say something.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to close the public hearing, so.
So before we do that, I didn't know if there were any more questions of the applicant. I guess two points. One is to address the letter that we just received. And then secondarily, they do have an opportunity to do any rebuttal. I know there were specific questions that you asked, that the commissioner Watts asked them to address with respect to comments that were made. But if there is anything else you'd like to rebut from what was said tonight, you have an opportunity to do that. But let me maybe summarize the comment letter. That way you can determine whether or not you want to say anything further. We received a comment letter as of six oh five PM, which is too late pursuant to our procedures. What is odd though is that the letter expressly states that they're trying to supplement a letter that was previously sent in the day, but we did not receive any other letter in the day. So, but in an abundance of caution because of that comment, I will go ahead and summarize. This is a letter from Mitchell Si, who is an attorney that represents the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. One of the gentlemen who spoke tonight represents that same entity. The letter essentially summarizes a lot of what the gentleman said tonight with respect to the city should require the use of a local workforce. The city should require imposed training requirements on projects. And also a contention that the project does not qualify for a class thirty-two exemption from CEQA and that environmental impact report should be prepared for the project.
Okay.
And so then now is your last chance for any final rebuttal before the public hearing is closed.
So if there's anything else you'd like to share, go ahead.
Categorically exemption, section number fifteen, three-three-two, class thirty-two infield. We meet all the requirements. We've, we've matched and we did our homework. We're, we're fully aware of what the CEQA class thirty-two infield exemption is in regards to. And we personally feel that we're being targeted. We've already mentioned the fact that we are planning on using union shops within this area. We're going to draw from San Diego, LA, Palm Springs. We do not have a workforce in this area that can mandate this type of a construction. So we are going to have to go outside of the realms of the city limits to get proper trades. So when it comes to, as we said, we will do our best to work with the local unions. And, and if they have an apprentice program, we'll work with the apprentice program with that contractor. We have no problems doing that, that job. What we do not like is the fact that somebody's trying to incite that we're not in compliance. And I feel like, you know, they're trying to take advantage of deep pockets to cover this exemption requirement.
Thank you. Any, any other questions?
Has the city required you to identify what your workforce is going to be?
No, sir.
Okay. And it's, I think, pretty clear that we don't ever tell any project applicant that comes in who or what they can hire.
Right.
Okay.
This is a non-prevaling, this is not a city project. So we do not have to adhere to non-prevaling
We're not in that business. We're not in that arena. Thank you.
Totally accept.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you for they didn't, didn't submit a, yeah. Okay. Before I close the public hearing, anybody else, if you have anything else you'd like to share, please fill out. Raise your hand. Okay, I think we're good. All right. So I'm closing the public hearing and so we're ready for discussion. And Linnae, why don't we start with you?
Okay. So Gary and I have served on this subcommittee since twenty, twenty-twenty-two. And so just, I know that you guys have it in your packet, but I'm looking at page two and page three of the background summary, if you want to follow along. So Mr. Kim submitted this application on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The first steering committee meeting was July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And in that was a concern about the canyon effect along second street and the massing of the building. In their second meeting, the steering committee still had this concern of the canyon effect along second street and the massing of the building. We met as a subcommittee on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we met Mr. Kim. And those were also our concerns, the massing, the lack of building articulation along the streets, entrance to the hotel, that it wasn't the right fit in Old Town. And that it shouldn't move forward unless every development standard in this specific plan had been met. That was our first meeting. And I'm just kind of giving this background because I think it's important. The third meeting of the steering committee was on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, same concerns. And then in two thousand and twenty-three is the last meeting that the steering committee had. So at that point, they were, gave it to us. They were frustrated and gave it to us. And so we started with our second meeting on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. So we had one meeting in two thousand and twenty-two, one in two thousand and twenty-three, and we had five in two thousand and twenty-four. So my point is that we really didn't see any progress for about two years where the applicant wasn't willing to work with the city. And so I am glad to see this progress, progress that the applicant has made. And I think this progress really didn't start until after our meeting in May fifteenth, where we did not accept the plan that was presented and we asked for a redesign. So after that meeting, we had meeting number five on September twelfth, where we, where presented the project, the changes that had been made. And then we gave some feedback on that. We weren't, didn't feel like it had met what we were asking. And then our meeting on September eighteenth was our sixth meeting as a subcommittee. And the applicant presented what they had done. And then on October tenth, we saw this again. And at this time, at that meeting, so this is meeting number seven, I still shared my concerns on the massing of this project and the massing mitigation. As far as meeting the design criteria, I know that staff has said that they have met the design criteria. We asked for horizontal and vertical articulation. I don't feel like that has truly been met as far as the plan of not imposing on Old Town. I know that we have this overlay and that we have to permit this. But what we don't have to permit is a design that doesn't fit in Old Town. And so the question really is, I think, is when I, when we met in this seventh meeting, what I suggested is that, you know, we were able to see some pictures of hotels in San Diego that were huge. But as you looked at them, they didn't look huge. And so there's a way of doing that, a way of being able to mitigate the mass of this building. And that was my concern at this seventh meeting still, that we were not mitigating that mass. And in being able to take some of that massing off of front street also. And so that was my concern there. You know, I feel like the steering committee kind of taking their hands off of it is trusting us to make a good decision here as a planning commission. I, I don't feel like this building, this hotel meets the spirit or character of Old Town. The way the mass is set up, it doesn't really respect the character of Old Town. It doesn't work with our historical nature of Old Town. I know that it's going to be big no matter what, but I think that it can be better. It's overpowering. Any way you look at it, it's overpowering. And I think it's possible to make it so it doesn't look like this massive building. And I, I think that more can be done with the horizontal and the vertical articulation. And it's not something that I can vote yes on, to be honest. And like you said, we've had a lot of, we've worked a lot with this. And I do appreciate the fact that they've made a lot of changes and I, I think they're trying, but I don't think we're there. I don't think we're there to, that we can, at least for me, that I can put a stamp of approval and say, this looks great in Old Town. It doesn't look great in Old Town. And I cannot feel good about that.
Hey, Gary?
How many meetings did you say? Seven? So we've been working. It's been a long process. And certainly from the first meeting we had, we've come a long, long way. Obviously not far enough for some, maybe for others. But it has been a long process. And there have been significant changes to the original submittal. The concerns that my colleague, Linay Turley-Drayhill brings up are legitimate. We've been dealing with those issues from the first meeting. And we have tried, at least the subcommittee members have tried to point the applicant in the direction we feel would be appropriate for Old Town and for the city. And I think we've succeeded in some respects and, and maybe we haven't succeeded in other respects. But we've tried to get to a point that's acceptable to the applicant and to the city. And that's where we are tonight. And staff is recommending that we approve it with the conditions of approval. They weren't prepared to do that before. I know that staff has been working tirelessly trying to get this project acceptable and able to be approved. So my, my hats off to the work done by the staff in that regard. As I pointed out earlier, the overlay was a part of the revised specific plan. So that allowed that to happen. That allowed this project to come forward. It's certainly, I will agree with Linay that it's not what I would build if I was a builder. And it's not what I want in Old Town. It's just not what I would picture the ultimate thing. But, but, but the applicant has responded to our concerns, specifically the ones we brought up at the last meeting. And in my opinion, they've responded in an acceptable way. The city has determined, the city, let me back up. The city spells out specific design standards. They're, they're objective. They're not subjective. And they're spelled out in, in the plan and elsewhere. The applicant has, in the eyes of staff, met those requirements. And they're prepared to recommend that we approve it. So as I said, I wouldn't build it like that. It's certainly what I, not what I envisioned, and it's not what I'd want to see. But as a matter of fairness, they've complied with the rules set down by the city, by the process. And as a planning commissioner, I don't feel that I could, after all this time, then tell the applicant again that it's not acceptable after they've addressed the concerns we brought before. My concern would be that that's just going to be an endless stream of things that you need to do. So I'm going to disagree with my colleague. We have spent a lot of time on this project and we share a lot of the same concerns, more concerns than we don't agree on. But, but I'm going to have to say that I would support this project if it comes to that, based on those criteria that I've spelled out. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando?
Sorry. Okay. So I have the same concerns that there's, it is too big. It's not broken up enough. The architecture, I don't believe, is a great architecture for the downtown. I mean, for the Old Town. They did address the redesign of the, the pool being oriented more to Front Street, but it still has the same design. I feel it needs to be broken up much more. Front Street, it goes up, the rendering shows, you know, it goes up straight up, seven stories. It goes seven and eight because it has that open up balcony. I think it's in the right step, but I think still that there has to be a couple more thought that gets put into it from the massing and the architecture. Maybe this isn't the right architecture. Maybe, maybe something more simpler or a different type of architecture, maybe a Spanish architecture. But it does look very busy and it does look very big for the Old Town. That's, that's my, my concern.
Okay. Adam?
Yeah, thank you. You know, obviously it's been said too, this, this has been a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of time has gone into this. You know, the nexus of this whole thing was from an economic standpoint, you know? And I, and I look at what something like this could bring economically to the city, to jobs in both building and then running the actual hotel and, and service part of it itself. You know, from, from the beginning, we knew because of the overlay, there's, whether it's this applicant or another applicant, there's something this size could present itself and, and be looked at that way. I mentioned back in May, kind of the same thing. If this was in the middle of Old Town, I think it, it's a little bit different that it's on an anchor side of Old Town. I, I think that's a little bit more palatable. And depending which way you're coming in, either a final way out or a big grand welcome as you're coming in, into Old Town. I did show some of these new renderings to, to a couple of folks and, and the resounding was more of a, a wow, I can't believe that, that would come here. That's, that's amazing, where I felt like last time in May, there was a lot of concerns on it. If I remember correctly, back in May, staff did recommend approval and we said we wanted back for redesign. And at that point, you know, I, I brought forward to you guys a, a very, you know, straightforward question. Let's give them direction on what exactly we're looking for. Because when you just say redesign or come up with this, like, we, we've got to give some direction. As someone that's coming to town, spent years persistent saying, this is what I want. We want to make this happen. We've chosen this area for a reason. You know, I commend them on, on having that kind of tenacity to do that. We tasked, we said, okay, come back and do A, B, C. And when I look at these, I would agree with Commissioner Watts that they've, they've done that. You know, the pool was a massive point of contention last time and a big part of discussion. And it's something that at one point was possibly seemed that it was never going to be moved, but it's been moved. I think the entire design of the building, look of it, coming in from that south side of town, looks completely different than it did before and gives it a completely different feel. We asked them to address the balconies. They've done that. You know, it is a large building, but I think the massing, I think the articulation that we asked for, I, I think everything is there. And when I sit back and go, okay, if I'm that applicant coming forward, desiring to do business, deciding to bring some sort of project to town, and I've checked every single box that you've asked me to do, then you tell me you don't like it, go do it again. And then I check every box again. How do we, we're not giving them that kind of direction. Parking, I know has been, has been a concern. As someone who's attended multiple conferences, a lot of time that parking's not being driven in. If you're coming in for a, a larger conference, you might be flying in, you might be Ubering in. I mean, there's, 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 there's other ways to look at everything that we've got going on there. But I think with this hotel represents, I think what it could bring to the region, I think some of the attention that it will bring, positive attention into Old Town, the fact that they've checked the boxes, that they've accomplished, in my view, everything that we asked them to do, I would be in support of this project.
Okay. Thank you. I would be in general agreement with Commissioner Watts and Commissioner Ruiz. To be honest, if I was sitting on city council in two thousand and ten, I would not have voted to change the the zoning or specific land overlay. But that's not our choice. That's, that's been made. And I think that the applicant has responded, perhaps later than we would have liked in, but has responded very well. In addition to, I think, the mass being pushed back on, on First Street, I also noticed that that change has made a big difference from Front Street, that there's a lot less mass on Front Street, which I think is, is equally as important as, as First Street. I think they've done everything that we've asked them to do. And in addition, I think the things that we did ask them to do adds value to the hotel. I think that, that it is important for creating jobs, commerce. The other businesses in Old Town, I think, will, will benefit from it. And I will, I will support approving the, the, the two applications, actually.
Just one more comment. And I think you made the point, Adam, that at the May fifteenth meeting, staff also recommended approval. So I remember when I first came on planning commission, feeling like, if staff recommended approval, I have to approve it like they recommended it. And I've learned through, gosh, ten years, that, you know, sometimes when there's, when there's cer, they're making that recommendation on findings. And, you know, our job as a planning commissioners, as a planning commission and commissioners, is to look at those findings, but then to also, we have that, we have that leeway, so to, so to speak, of, which I think everybody here is, has already spoken to that. But, you know, when you're saying that they've done everything we, we've asked, you know, that's, that's a point of view, right? In my mind, they haven't. I don't feel like they, that we have the articulation that would really make a difference in the, in the hotel itself and the massing. And as far as Front Street, it's, it's still seven stories up. There's still, there's not much change on Front Street. So for you saying it's different, it's, it's really not. So that's just, just adding to that. And I just, you know, would hope that we can, you know, make a decision that we all feel good about. And that's, that's really what we're here for. And it has been a lot of work and a lot of time and, and trying to make the right decision. So, thank you.
I'd, I'd like to clarify too and respond a little bit. We, we wrestled with this a lot. And when they first brought back the changes that we requested, I remember the pool actually being in the middle of the project on Front Street. And that the building would have been, as you entered town from south, would have been directly, immediately, seven stories. And we were kicking it around, different ideas. And that's when we decided to move the pool or suggested that the pool be moved from the middle, which would be surrounded by buildings, and move it over to the front. So that would really soften that abrupt elevation gain. And it looked like that, from what I'm hearing from people that didn't see that, that accomplished that goal. So the pool was moved twice. And it finally, I think, was the best answer considering the circumstances that we were dealt on that. So I, I appreciate hearing that you felt that it was softened by that because that was the intent of moving that there was to really cut down that immediate elevation. So I, I didn't explain that earlier and I wanted to bring that up because I thought that was important at the time when they did that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do see a difference in, in from Front Street. So other than reducing the height of the building, if you brought it down to four stories or, or three stories or whatever, yes, that would make a huge difference. But that's not what the overlay calls for. And I think, I can't think of any specific changes that I would ask that would change the overall feel of the building. And that, I think, would be our challenge. That I agree with Commissioner Ruiz, that we would owe it to the applicant to be very specific in what other changes. And I don't have any. So I don't feel I could add anything more to that. So I don't know if that's something that you, you know, that you have something specific in mind that would be?
Well, I think Fernando mentioned some specific things. And yeah, I did talk to them about some specific things at that seventh meeting. So it's not that there's nothing else that could be done. There's definitely things that could be done to address the massing of the building. So yeah, there's definitely things that could be done. And I think Fernando also mentioned the architecture itself. You know, I think it's just, you know, you look at Old Town and Old Town is amazing. You know, I mean, we've seen Old Town struggle. To now, it's thriving, sometimes thriving too much in some ways. But I think, you know, we're, we're proud of it. We're proud of Old Town. And we're proud, really, I am personally proud of the historical part of Old Town. And I think that's, that's my main thing here of trying to, even with a seven-story building, trying to keep that as much as we can. And I do think it's possible. I think we can do more with that to make it something that we're really proud of instead of just saying, okay, they've met everything that, you know, we've asked them to do, so to speak. You know, this is the best we can do. Yeah, I, I guess I'm just not comfortable being okay with that. I don't think we've done everything we can do. And I think it can look a lot better. And I think it could be beautiful. We could be super proud of it instead of, oh, it's a little bit better and it's softened and sure, sure, it's a little bit better. It is. I just don't think it's something I could be proud of to say, hey, we have this in Old Town and this is amazing.
The only thing, if I can make a comment there, you know, I think interpretation of it, that you like it or you don't, that's subjective to wherever we're at. But I would also point out, you know, you, you talk about wanting to show off and be proud of the Old Town that we have. And I look at this as an opportunity to do that. I, I look at some, this as an opportunity to bring and drive more traffic and more people, not that kind of traffic, but, you know, to, to come in. This, this is a five-star, I believe, right? Four-star, five-star, fi, five, right? I mean, this is, this is a, an elevated type of group that, that would be coming out to utilize these types of, you know, this type of building space and, and meeting space. And I mean, think, think about a, a group coming in that wants to see, okay, where, where are you going to go from that hotel? You're probably going to leak right out in, into Old Town. And then you can showcase still a lot of the history and a lot of the stuff that we have. I think the economic driver that this, that this does bring is extremely valuable to the city and to Old Town. And, and I think there'll, there'll be a point in time, I, I mentioned last time, you know, the, this building that we're in right now, at some point seemed too big, too giant, you know? But, but it's a staple here. And, and I think a lot of people would argue that, that the development and construction of this building really kind of boosted Old Town and look at, and look at what it's done. And, and I feel like something like this, having a resort, having a thousand-person meeting space directly here in Old Town will have similar, similar results.
Yeah, I definitely don't disagree with that. It's not the economic development part of it. It is the look of the hotel itself. That's, that's my problem with it. It's not, you know, of course, I think all of us have said, we don't want an eight-story necessarily. I don't know that you said that, but we don't picture that here. And I know it's allowed, but for me, it's not that. I don't have any problem with that, the economic development of it. I just want it to be a hotel that we're proud of, that it's beautiful. And it's, and it doesn't feel like it's taking over Old Town by just, you know, this mass. And so that, so I don't disagree with you on that at all. That's just my concern.
But I just want to point it, it's just that perception thing. Because, because arguably, the people that I showed this to, their response was, oh, my gosh, this is beautiful. That's amazing. I can't believe we're going to get something like that. So I, I, I think just that, you know, it's subjective. I mean, either, either you like it or, or you don't. But I'm, I don't want to cut off conversation. I, I'd be ready to make a motion unless there's more discussion. I don't want to cut off anyone's discussion.
Let me just ask, is there anything else? Anybody ask or are we exhausted?
I'd just like to give an example of maybe the massing, that how I understand and how I'm viewing the massing. I'm looking at kind of the page off the freeway, the elevation. Can you pull up the elevation off the freeway?
It's on the PDF, Oscar, not on the presentation.
Page 20, I think. Oscar, it's on the PDF. It's not part of the presentation, so it's on a separate screen. You're talking about a perspective view from Interstate 15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the architectural plans, the one that PA 6.4, the one that shows both adjacent buildings. I think that's the building we're going by is at. How many stories is that building?
The TruRocks building?
Yeah.
Four.
So that's a four-story building. And if you look at it in perspective to this eight-story building, they look like they're the same height. It's seven. Well, if that's four, and this is seven, it looks about like the same height. That, right there. Yeah. So if that's the same... If the building on the left, right, the proposed building, is seven stories, and the TruRocks is four stories, how is it that that's the same height in that rendering? And that's what I'm talking about, of the massing, that it goes up seven stories. There's no breaks. That's like my concern. And then also off of Second Street, how it just goes completely up seven stories. But that building is four stories.
It is a four-story building, but when we look at their drawings of it, they're floor-to-floor high.
So I'm so sorry, but we had closed the public hearing, so if we're going to hear further from the applicant, we're going to need to reopen, and that's going to be at the discretion of the chair.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, 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 no. I just...
So this picture is just coming up, and that's my concern. My concern is the massing, right? As a commission, we're agreeing and saying, you know what? We can accommodate this eight-story building because it meets all of these requirements. It's a great building in the downtown, in the Old Town. It's greatly articulated. It looks great. I don't... I can't agree right now with how that building is four stories, and the proposed building is seven stories. And the articulation, that building next to it isn't articulated, but it's only three stories. So that's one of my concerns, and I think it's the same concern. That's just one example. And if we look at the picture of the front elevation off of Front Street, it's the same thing. And that's my concern. Old Town is not... I mean, yeah, they redesigned it, but I can't agree right now with this design. I think it could be redesigned in a different way, where it could get the same amount of rooms, but maybe it could be maybe four stories in the front, like all the other buildings? And then maybe towards the back, it could be higher, and the same thing on the freeway, or it could be articulated, it could be broken up. The architecture can change. How many stories does City Hall?
Three feet, and the tower's 85 feet high.
So it's three stories? So it means it's going to be double the size of City Hall.
Well, three stories but 85 feet high.
Oh, three stories, 85 feet.
To the top of the...
The bell tower's 85 feet.
Yeah, so that's my concern. And, I mean, we can go back and forth and give our opinion, but I think I would love a hotel here. It's a great spot for a hotel. It's right in the entrance. I just feel like this image and this rendering, there still needs to be more work done. That's it.
Okay, anybody else? I will entertain a motion then.
If not, then I'd like to move approval of planning application PA 22-035 and PA 22-0037, subject to the conditions of approval.
And just to clarify, that is subject to conditions of approval, including the condition that was added tonight, related to the great improvement issuance at the discretion of the city engineer and building official.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a first by Ruiz and a second by Watts. So we'll vote on this now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say nay.
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 Okay, so we have a three to two. And we will go on to the rest of our agenda.
Motion passes. Motion passes, thank you.
So I did want to say thank you to the subcommittee for all the efforts that were put in, as well as the applicant and staff and Scott. I think you did a great job. Appreciate all the efforts that went into this. So we will go to commission reports. Anybody have anything?
I do.
I just want to quickly mention, there was a ceremony here yesterday to honor Peg Moore. And if you haven't seen it out there, they have a new plaque up that honors Peg's service to the city and her life, and it's right next to the plaque that they put up for her husband Jimmy. And it was a very nice, small ceremony. A few of the council members were there to speak. And I fondly remember Peg. I don't know if many of you had a chance to work with her. For those that don't know, she was one of the first ones behind the city of Temecula being formed. And she and her husband Jimmy were instrumental in that. And Peg was on the first city council of Temecula. And then she, when she left that, she came on the Old Town Local Review Board in 2002, I believe it was, and she served until 2021 or '22, 20 years. And that's where I met her, when I first went on the Old Town Local Review Board. And I learned so much from her, and she loved Old Town with a passion. And if you think she didn't disagree with some of the things going on, she was very vociferous about it. And one thing that bugged her more than anything was the merchants advertising on their cars in the street. She didn't like that at all. But I learned a lot from Peg, and I remember when I first considered applying for the Planning Commission, I went and asked her because she had so much experience. And I said, well, Peg, I'm thinking about putting in for the Planning Commission, but if it's the same people putting in, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do that. She goes, oh, go ahead and do it. They need some fresh young blood in there anyhow. And so I did. And I didn't get picked that time, but I did eventually. But Peg was a wonderful woman. She will be remembered fondly by everyone in Temecula, and I just wanted to honor her by bringing that up and letting you know it was a very nice ceremony. So if you get a chance, go check out the plaque. It's very nice, and that's my only comment. Thanks.
Yeah, I had planned on being there, and I just couldn't make it. Peg was one of a kind. Anybody else?
I'll just say one thing. I'm not quite done yet, but we just had reappointments. I want to congratulate Chairman Hagel on your reappointment here to the council and... Or to the commission? And promotion there. And then also say congratulations to Mr. Watson, who'll be joining the commission. So, right, Watson? Right, yeah.
Yes.
No relation, yeah.
But to state for the records, we will miss you, so.
I do, I'm not done yet.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
Do we have one more meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have one more meeting.
I'll save my blistering comments.
Commission reports, or subcommittee reports. We did have... Fernando, do you want to cover the one that we just had?
That was me.
You remember?
It was the municipal code. It was the municipal code maintenance subcommittee.
That was me.
No, no, we had one on Promenade Mall.
Last week was...
I was like, we just had one, that was me.
The mall.
Did you... Okay, there is a...
Just try seven meetings.
Yeah. We'll have a issue coming up, just a small adjustment to the, I guess, the specific plan of the Promenade Mall. And adjustment that relates to what will be allowed to be built in the future.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be a reconciliation of the square footages in the specific plan.
Right. So, but we did have a subcommittee meeting today. If you, Adam, you want to go?
Did we? I don't remember, was that... No, we did. It was also for municipal codes. A couple items related to auto mall. One had to do with some Wayfair signage, and then the other had to do with permitted uses that I believe will be seen here at the next commission meeting.
Yeah, so the other one was related to additional locations within the city that will be, that would allow a auto mall.
Auto mall.
So particularly the... Specifically, the lot that is next to the Chamber of Commerce and behind Target. That's 18 acres that will... Multiple dealers would be allowed in there. On Yonex, yeah. Okay, community development report.
Just a few items. I'd like to start by introducing Andy Krog, our new building official. I think many of you met him at dinner, but just wanted to make the official announcement.
It's a pleasure being here with the city, and if you have any building-related questions, I'm here to help. A little background on me, I come from 24 years on the contracting side, structural, steel, and erection, and then 11 years now on the public agency side. So it's a pleasure to be here.
And we did steal Andy from the city of Marietta. Just another announcement, it looks like we're going to be off on December 4th, so the first meeting in December will be off, and then we'll be back on the 18th. I was going to mention that that will be Commissioner Ruiz's last meeting. We'll have a proper send-off. And you already brought it up, but we have a new commissioner, your replacement. Gentleman's name is Mark Watson, and that appointment was made at the last city council meeting, and you can watch the video if you're so interested. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Public Works.
Okay, ongoing construction projects. I wanted to talk about those real quick. The three in Old Town, I figured you'd want some updates on. The Epperson Lot, which is also known as the Stampede Lot, has been base paved now. So even though they can't do a final cap of it until probably another month, what we're going to do is base pave it, do some temporary striping, all the residents, everybody can use it. It's just it'll have its final cap towards the end of the month, towards the end of December, and then January is when the contract ends, so it'll be all buttoned up at that time. Same goes for the Sixth Street improvements that are ongoing. So they've done the bulbouts, they've done the sidewalk, so that'll help, you know, alleviate some parking over there. It'll be a nice, because it'll be the nice San Diego Buff sidewalk, no more tripping over the asphalt, things like that. So that's being completed in January, kind of the same thing, probably before Christmas, but the contract ends in January. And then undoubtedly, you've seen the work going on in front of City Hall, the two gravel parking lots. So council did approve those to be paved, and so that's what's been going on the last few days. So they graded it today. Compaction was achieved, so you're going to see some pavement go down and probably have it striped before the weekend. We're trying to beat the rain. So it's going to be nice to be able to utilize those lots in a much bigger manner for city events, be able to have food trucks out there, kind of alleviate some of the center area when we do Sunset Market. So those lots are getting paved and completed here shortly. And then the pickleball courts at Ronald Reagan, those are ongoing, on schedule. Look for a January opening on those pickleball courts. So that's looking really, really good. And then the last thing I want to conclude with, just because I won't... We won't see each other till the second meeting of December. If you watched the city council meeting last Tuesday, you noticed that Aaron brought out about the closures that are going to happen on the I-15 northbound, the northbound on-ramps, not just the circular one, but the direct-on, coming from like if you were coming westbound. Those are going to be closed, not at the same time consecutively, in order to finish the construction of the CD lanes, the collector distributors that are going under there. So that's happening mid-January. It will be an inconvenience. Traffic will be detoured to Rancho California Road to go back and then go back north. But that's the way that the plan has been approved through Caltrans. And so just look out for that, that that is happening mid-January, probably about a month timeframe of closures. So it will be a little bit of pain, but probably the only pain we'll experience in this particular project, because it's just about wrapped up. So it's been a great project thus far, so.
What's the detour, though, if people ask? So what exactly? Tell me.
So the detour is if, whether you're going eastbound or westbound, and you want to go...
On Winchester.
On Winchester, and you want to go north on the I-15, the detour will send you back either on Yonex or Jefferson, back to Rancho California Road, and then you get on there and then head northbound. I know that seems a little counterintuitive, but due to Caltrans regulations, we're not allowed to detour up to Marietta into a neighboring city. You can't do that. You have to have the detour, the shortest route within your city. So you got to go back south to go north, you know?
But people could choose to go north if they want to.
People are going to find their own way. People are going to find their own way. They're going to head up Yonex, they're going to head up Jefferson.
Yeah.
So we're not dictating it, but that'll be the posted detour.
Got it.
But you know how traffic is, it'll find its way.
Right. Right. Thank you.
So those are all our project updates.
And the auxiliary lane, that's awesome. I got on there today, it was like, phew, just like...
Yep. Auxiliary lane's done. It connects Temecula Parkway to Rancho Cal with no merging, and there are no more closures slated for that. It's done, just a few little punch items that the contractor needs to finish, but it's essentially done.
I actually feel like, because I got on the freeway today probably at 8:20, where normally it's just like, it's backed up, I mean, from Temecula Parkway. So as I got on, I was just like, where is everyone? This is so great! So I think that that has something to do with it, you know, the backing up.
Yeah, it's already had a little bit of an impact, and it's alleviated some traffic.
So cool. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ron, can I get the monthly update on Nicholas? Is that going to roll over into 2025?
Oh, yeah, it'll go into spring of 2025. They are complete now with the major relocations of the 54-inch water line, as well as the sewer, so those items are complete. Now what you're going to see is the box culverts coming in. So the construction of the actual culverts is beginning now, and you'll see that wrapped up by spring.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I think the freeway will be finished before that is. Okay, I will adjourn to December 18th.